Okay, um, good evening. Continuing on with our review and study sessions for the recommended budget for next fiscal year, FY twenty four, twenty five. This evening, we want to touch on our next to last major fund, which are going to, our major funds, I should say, which are going to be our two street funds, two oh two and two oh three, major streets and local streets. Our last remaining one, which we'll be dealing with in a couple of weeks, couple few weeks here, is going to be our water fund. So this is really going to be it for, you know, the first phase of the budget review process. So I'll go through it. We have our two leaders from the Department of Public Services that are here to get in more details. But before I go into that, I did want to give an update. I hadn't had a chance to talk to the mayor. We did have a call this afternoon with the state, myself and Charday Crutchfield, and just went over a few things. One, we just gave them an update on the audit, as well as kind of discussing the financials for the remainder of the fiscal year for the city, and talked a little bit about some of the outstanding payments that are coming. So it was more of an update from the city to them. And just again, you know, we've continued to progress with the audit. We're still targeting the end of June, first of July as our, as our target date. As you will recall, we've got the bond financing for our water department that is dependent upon us getting the audit done by, by that early part of July. So we're still tracking for that. That was, you know, really kind of the, the main thing with the audit. You know, we're, you know, we're kind of moving forward. You know, we still got some work to do, but we're, we're still on track. In terms of some of the payments, we're, you know, because the audit has not been completed, we're missing a number of payments, a number of payments have been withheld. Our road fund, Act fifty one monies have been withheld. We've had revenue sharing that has been withheld for April. And June is scheduled to be withheld. And we have some grant reimbursements that are withheld. And that's just the state law. If the audit's not filed, they start withholding payments. The, kind of the downside of that is we don't have that cash. It's money that we've already, in some instances, we've spent, and money that is in this year's budget that we're, you know, just currently don't have an opportunity to get our, and get our hands on for paying the city's expenses and everything. And in total, it's, it's well over $2 million that we're talking about. So this is not a small amount. So, you know, we, we discussed that with the state. We're planning around that. I did have a conversation with the mayor, just in terms of our year-end projections, getting through the year end, managing our cash, and just making sure we stay in strong financial position. So just kind of shared that with the state. They just want to make sure there's, you know, nothing, nothing is getting off track here. And we're just continuing to, to plow forward on the, on the audit, as well as getting caught up for this current fiscal year in terms of all the bookkeeping, accounting, and, and everything for this current fiscal year. And then starting to get ready, they, they asked about next, the next fiscal year audit. So, you know, we're going to be shifting gears here pretty quickly. But just wanted to provide you all with that update, you know, and that we're continuing to communicate with the state. And, you know, we'll, we'll be getting back with them in a couple of weeks. And then I think, Mayor, they want to come down here in June and do a face-to-face sit-down in kind of middle to late part of June, so. Okay, so moving on into our street funds. Jerome, can you just briefly describe the difference between major and local streets? You know, what, what constitutes major and what constitutes local streets for everyone?
So in the cities, you have what they consider major streets, like Michigan Avenue, here, Eastern Road, Middle Bell, any street that borders, takes us into another city, like John Daley, Bee's Daley, Avondale, snow emergency routes. These are streets that the police and fire had to travel to get to the local streets. Those are considered major. The neighborhood of the streets are considered local. So of course, we have more local streets than majors, you know, but that's the difference. And that's how they divide out the Act fifty one money to give us so much percent or local so much percent or major.
So, you know, when we look at the revenue sources, you know, we're primarily talking about the Act fifty one money that, that Jerome mentioned. We're projecting about $2 million. And that comes from, well, like gas taxes and, and I think some fees, and the state shares that money with local governments. And they split it between local and major. Much of the split is, is directed towards major. So on page one here, you see the amount of money that we're projecting for next year. That $2 million figure is what we're working with based on some of the estimates from the state. They generally will give us estimates based on kind of their projections for next year. And then if you look at the middle column, the activity, you can see we've only booked 1.269 million this year. And again, that's where we get into the fact that we haven't collected all those monies. The monies, uh, some of those money has been withheld. Normally, that money would, that amount would be higher at this point. But because of funds are being withheld, that's a little lower than expected. We'll move on to the next page. So here we get into the expenses for major streets. Our first category is our, the engineering. And this is the component of engineering that's specifically for capital improvements or for road projects, if I'm saying that correct, Jerome?
Yes.
So we, we kind of track our engineering cost. And this city engineer is a long-time consultant, Benish. And they do different types of work on behalf of the city. But in this category is where we capture the work that's specifically tied to capital improvements or the road projects. So that's that lot, that's that line item there. Next, we have salaries. And we generally only bill about one employee or a fraction of an employee into the road fund. So that's why that amount is, is so low. Much, much of our DPS workers are going to be found in our water fund. We do bill some of that back to the road funds based on some of the activities that they may do during the fiscal year. Then we have some fringes and, and everything attributed to that employee. And next, we have our tree trimming. And then we've got, and this is all under maintenance. Then we've got some road repair money and education and training. The biggest cost generally is going to be for road projects. And you can see this fiscal year, we budgeted 2.465 million. There's nothing that's been booked currently, and that, that is accurate, Jerome. And that's just the, and Jerome, why don't you speak to that? Just kind of explain in the current situation in terms of road projects that were planned and the status of it.
Under this major road fund, this two point, that was for Avondale, Phase one. We completed Phase one, and that's why, you know, you go and see blanks all we drew. Phase one came in at 28% over budget. So it depleted my budget for the road fund. Wasn't able to transfer money to local fund like I normally do. And now, just depending on the audit, you know, once we see where we are with the audit, I might have to do a debt elimination plan for major. Because with over budget, I just don't know about how much right now. But that's why I did not complete Phase two nor three. I did put the water main in Phase two, and I did a temporary overlay. You see from like Eastern to almost what? Almost to hell. You saw a temporary overlay, that, that's all I could do right now until we catch us some more dollars. So like projects on whole or major, probably to twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. Cause we had to build that fund back on.
And so, you know, as Jerome, yeah, Jerome alluded to, well, once we get the audit and we get through the accounting for this fiscal year, we'll have a better handle on where we are. And then we can bring back, you know, what we'll be able to do for next fiscal year. Right now, we just don't have much of a basis for planning any projects from a budget standpoint. I think last year, you, you know, the, the fund was.
Last year, what we did was we started in twenty two on Avondale, and we finished up in twenty three, and we stopped, you know, because we got away. You know, like I said, I got away on the audit to see where I'm sitting at. Yes.
You're interested in being fun? And I'm going to ask a question about, um.
Good, you know?
For all funds, are we doing it? You know how you used to do the five-year project, I mean forecasting?
Yeah.
Are we going to be doing?
Yeah, we, we will, you know, certainly, once, you know, once we get the, the audit, once we get a, a solid number, we've got a preliminary number. You know, the auditors did complete a preliminary number for FY twenty four. I'm sorry, FY twenty three. It's hard to believe we're still doing FY twenty three. So, you know, once we get that, then we'll have a basis for doing, doing that. Not only getting that audit, but getting a better sense of what, what this year is shaping up. You know, and that, that's one of the big things. We just, you know, as we've been going through the budget process, I know Jerome and Tori and Maya, you know, we saw some things even this week just in terms of things just not being in the right category. So once we get the audit done, and then we go through this fiscal year and get everything moved around, then we can start, you know, really projecting out. Because we, you know, we, we don't want to just be going year to year. And that's one of the things, you know, we.
Just to answer her question there, we did have a five-year. We put it together before Mr. Carrington left. So we had a five-year, but like I said, with COVID and the inflation, it just took flight down. Cause we had a five-year plan that Avondale would be done. Yeah, cause we started under Mayor Knowles' first time with Avondale. You know, that's what they went to. We went into desire right there.
Yeah, oh yeah, we were.
Just go and do it. And so, like I said, we, we, we always project out five, six years on the roads and water.
Have a question.
Yes.
If Councilman Redd says like. I know when I was up at the House of Representatives, you all submitted a overabundance of requests. When I say overabundance, it's great. Did the state, you know, at this point, time ever come through with fulfillment in it?
None of them. I did, I sent the state, I sent a lobbyist, sent him $98 million worth of road projects, you know, having heard back, which I didn't speak.
And that was deal presently?
That was like last year.
Last year.
Uh, summertime, uh, during the auto show. I sent it to him and, you know, like Harrison, you know, I gave him a brief outline of Harrison being a historical role, trying to get some historical money. I didn't hear back, and I didn't pay. That's a big ask. Where, you know, the governor always say fix the road, but they don't give money for road. Like done through infrastructure, you know? But yeah, when you was out there with Julia, I sent a big ask up there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I was like, that was going to come through, and it didn't.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I have a question there. One of the professional consultants, well, what's that for in the mentioned and requested budget?
Which, are you looking at?
When I said like the 50,000, you had the 50,000. Crack ceiling.
The crack ceiling?
Yeah, that's what outside contractor. But that's something we would do next year. What we do is we go around, and you see the spider cracks in the road, resell. Because every three years, you know, we have to do a pays study. We just did it, which raised the roads in the city of Inchester. Then once you turn that into the state, you have to be actively spending that money. They'll notify me and the mayor, like what we do. So we have to act, so we're doing something. This 50,000, that's just on them to take your side. When you get to the local side, you'll see a legal song. Because more local roads would be crack ceiling than major.
Okay. Okay, um, so we, we, we just touched on the consultant there, that $50,000 amount. And then the last, last couple items are, are going to be a street sweeping and road repairs. And that's really kind of in for, for the maintenance category. You know, the remaining items are, you know, we've got some, some expenses related to traffic control. And then we also pay some costs for traffic signals that on.
We paid for all the signals in the city of East of the Wayne County.
Yeah.
Yep, for the maintenance.
Then we've got snow removal. And that's again, what's being allocated towards major roads for, for snow removal supplies, vehicle maintenance and repair. A lot of that is tied to our, our, our winter work, you know, work during, activities during the winter. Next, we have the administrative services. And that's, that's the money that's paid back to the general fund. Would you see that there? Next item is sidewalks. There's 290,000 being appropriated in, under that category. And there's been a lot of work. Why don't you speak to?
So the mayor spoke to this. They, the, you know, first me, maybe, we got sued a couple of years ago by a sidewalk on Cherry. We, Trip has it, they'd be paying out what? 1.4? And by phone. So in the reason I lost that case, because when the judge asked me, does I have a program? I had to say no. Yep, and we didn't have a program register tag. So after that, the attorney advised me, I had to put together a program. First, I had to adopt the state ordinance, because I ordinance was outdated. So I also did that. And now we have a sidewalk program for the next 40 years. And I said, do we have a sidewalk in the city? It's like, like the front of this building don't have a sidewalk. When I finished the sidewalk program, whoever finished the sidewalk program, I'll be in 40 years. There will be a sidewalk down this street. So, so if anything happens, we're covered now because we have a program in place. But we had to pay out 1.4 million, literally. Solid. And then we got some tap money. We got $750,000 Phase one. And my initial plan was to have, let's put this sidewalk in, because I didn't want them to let this high contractors. And then we build the residence, where the previous administration may have changed that. So now, I had to seek funding to pay for this program because we're not building the residence. So I can't, because I did it in Phase one, I can't turn around and do it in Phase two, three, four. Yes. Cause everybody else said, well, they didn't pay, well, I gotta pay. So now we just, you'll see when we get to local, how much I'm asking for in Phase two.
Everybody understands that each homeowner is responsible for their sidewalk.
That's what the new ordinance says to the.
That, that homeowners are not responsible for those.
They are.
They are. That's what I'm saying. I did my driveway, I did the sidewalk, because it's mine. All the property from the sidewalk to the street is the city. So if there's a tree on that property that's dying, we got to go cut it down, you know? So that's ours.
So if the tree impacts the sidewalk, then do we repair it?
Here we repair it, so I'm, I'm thinking, if it's up there to.
Then the, the last item is interfund transfer. Historically, the city has transferred, transferred, we're allowed to transfer a certain amount out of major streets to local streets. Generally, major streets is, is relatively, is not well-funded, but relative to local streets, it's relatively better funded than local streets. And we oftentimes have a greater need, I would say, with our local streets. So we've historically have transferred money from major streets to local streets. And that's why you see there's 360,000 that's been put in this current fiscal year budget. We haven't made that transfer yet, pending exactly what the, what the state of the two funds are. But we are including it for next year, assuming that the, that the road fund is healthy enough to absorb that, absorb that transfer. But again, that's why we generally would just try and move money to help balance out the funding between local and major streets. We're going to move on to page number four, which is going to be our fund two oh three, our local streets. And, you know, primarily, these are going to be driven off of, again, the Act fifty one money. But you can see how the amount that local streets gets is significantly lower. It's over a million dollars lower than what's going into major streets. And so with the funding there, and then the amount of the transfer in, you see, it brings, it brings up the total to about 1.25 million. And that's kind of one of the issues is that that's just not a lot of money to maintain the streets. Not only maintain the streets, but to get the streets back up to where they are just given the lack of maintenance that has been done due to a lack of funding. So that's really the challenge, you know? 1.25 million just only, is only going to take you so far when you start looking at the amount of road repairs. I'm sure everybody could spend that money in, in their own district, probably.
Yeah.
It's very rough. I don't know if that's a local or major.
But we, 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 we got a plan. We'll see if it comes out. We went over and looked at it today, because obviously Westland did their half.
Yeah.
We did not do our half, and our residents are complaining, live over there. So we're looking, trying to see some federal funding along with SMART and the partnership with SMART in Wayne County. Try to get some federal funding to finish that and do industrial drive, what SMART terminal is. So cross your fingers, okay?
And we know it also the district.
It's just, that road is terrible.
I said a fault, I want you. He got a leg by Henry.
So, okay, so that, that's kind of the, the funding revenue situation with local streets. And we'll move on to the expenses there. Small amount of capital improvements. What, what's that for?
Northwest quadrant, just to finish it out, inspections, just to finish it out, yep. That should be finished by mid-June.
We get into the engineering, again, we break that out for engineering tied directly to capital improvements. So you see that amount that's there, 137,500. Again, we have an employee in that category for, for maintenance and whatnot. And, and just moving down, you see the fringes and everything. Then we get into some of the larger expenditures out of this fund. You see, we've got street sweeping as well as, you know, $450,000 of road repairs. That, you know, why don't you kind of just?
So during the course of the winter, you know, our roads get beat up. So we combine a project, Ms. Trippett, my deputy now, is working on a bid package to go out to vendors. So we do restoration work. What we do small patches, like you see the patch at the corner, right here, Bee's Daley, it missed the, the concrete patch. We do small patches like that. This local, you know, we did a patch on Preston. So some areas where we could maybe patch a hundred feet to 500 feet, we included in there, and longer, we do the restoration work from the water main break. So we, we, this is a, it's a help, this is just a small help, like, you know, if we really, the mayor say, hey, can you patch? Can you come down to our daily, further past Secretary of State? That's what I'll use this money for. So it's really, it's not actually doing the road, it's just patching it. Yep.
Okay, um, then we look at the improvements, $350,000 that's allocated. What's, what's that?
That's to finish out Northwest quadrant.
Okay, to finish for, for the next, into next fiscal year? That's just carrying over the next fiscal year? So that, that's just a completion of a already planned project there. Then we, you know, we've got some amounts for traffic control supplies and, and snow removal supplies, vehicle maintenance, similar to what we had in major. We do, and I missed the, we do have the administrative services charge here. We'll, we'll look to add that into the final proposed budget. But we, we do apply that, that expense.
They're going to be the 105 again?
I think we, we bump that up 10%. We bump everything up 10%.
All right.
And then we've got, why don't you speak to those next two?
So the 744? 744,000, that's the tap grant for the sidewalks. That's what we, we're seeking to get for Phase two. You know, then we contribute, it comes out to like a million, two million, three altogether on the sidewalk. We get, we get this, and we got, we just got a reimbursement right there for threesome.
Yeah.
From the state for Phase one. And then you see the sidewalk, we got 77,000, 770,000. And we looking to do 966 in Phase two. Yep, so that goes offset that.
And the last item there is going to be the vehicles. So, you know, kind of similar to major, major streets, right now, there's not a lot of, you know, projects planned currently for, for either the two road funds. Anything that will be done, what would be brought back, you know, after the audit is done, and we have a better sense of how much money is available and what, what the priorities may be. You know, I think Jerome and Tori would, would look at that with the mayor and then bring the.
Right.
And pack it to council.
Once, once the audit is completed, Ms. Trippett, my engineer, will sit down with the mayor and say, this is what we got, what you want to do. So, and then, you know, because if you, if you look at the road projects I've done, I came up under Mayor Knowles. So I've done no new projects since his first term. These are all what he start, and we just covered to the end.
And they all cost a lot more than we originally thought.
Right, right. Cause when we sat down with him, it was five million, five million, five million to do Avondale, which was 15 million. We had it at that time. We had it in the budget. Avondale Phase one was 7.5. And that was just a road, I don't want any of the infrastructure. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
That's like 11 million now?
Didn't suppose to get that.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's really it for both of the road funds. I mean, I think it's a pretty consistent, you know, consistent deal. You know, we're really, you know, driving to see where we are. You know, as we mentioned earlier, some of the revenues are on hold. We expect to get those, hopefully, you know, once the audit is completed in, in early July. So, you know, once, normally, once that's filed, the state is pretty, pretty good about releasing those funds. And then that'll, that'll free up a little bit of cash flow for, for, for the department, as well as getting an idea of what, what may be able to get done in the next fiscal year. You know, that, that's, that's really it, you know, for, for these two road funds. Who's, you know, anybody have any other questions or?
Of course, it will be emphasis to go out target grant mites. And we, we don't have any, it's very small. So that's, we'll be focused on that. Otherwise, we have to fix some of the road. People are going to lose their mind. Almost everybody's local street that's cracked in and piled up, you know? So we, we got, we had to figure out a way, we're going to look and see if this resource helps us, and then we can apply every year, try to get more money, identify other projects, and do the best we can.
So in, in terms of the overall budget, this is the, the last fund that, you know, we wanted to cover. We have scheduled a public hearing for June third is the date, I believe, which will be your first meeting in June. So we have, you know, a couple of weeks here, about two and a half weeks to, to kind of continue to answer any questions that you may have. We're going to be, continue to work on the water fund budget, and we'll be bringing that to you as soon as that, that stuff is completed. Obviously, we've got to get through the, the water rates. That stuff is completed, obviously, we've got to get through the um, the water rates, uh, you know, present you guys with what uh. What uh, then generally we bring options in terms of um, you know, the rates and the more we. Uh, wanna do in terms of capital projects with the water department, the higher the rates are gonna be, obviously, so that that's generally what uh. What the choices are are boiling down to, but um, you know, we'll bring that to you, but. At this point, you know, we've got a couple of weeks, you know, if there's any questions, we'll we'll condense all this information. Um, and get it ready for uh, for June third with the public hearing and and having the uh proposed budget.
If anybody wants any changes or anything, don't wait to June third. Cause we we hope to take a look on June third, so if there's anything that feeds you, like, look, we need to change this, let's say something now, let's take a look at that, have that discussion. Um, and then, you know, hopefully, June third, we have the public hearing, we vote, we send the budget into the state. Um, and we still, again, we only had the audit results, so we, you know, we we're going through the process of doing it, cause we have to. Um, but we'll know better once the audit is done, what we really had.
He's killed.
Who is? This was painless. I had a history too. We go to our rates, that's one of the.
What's that? Well, we've got the one scheduled for June third. No, I mean, you're, we're only required to have one public hearing, yeah, we're only required to have.
Orders, you have to do a post.
Yeah.
Hold me up, push out and go. Yep.
Yeah.
Try to just say black to our mission.
Okay. So um, you know, I'll 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 follow up with electronic copies, but if there's any questions, just email them. Um, you feel free to call, but uh, you know, again, over the next couple of weeks, two and a half weeks, we'll just be kind of compiling everything. We'll get it, uh, get everything together. As the mayor indicated, if you have any um changes or whatever you wanna propose, you know, just send those over and we can. Respond to that in terms of, you know, how that uh will make the numbers look and everything.
So. Yep. Public participation, we ne- we never open. It's just a study session, we never did. Cause we didn't take, we're not taking any action in it, other meetings we're going on legal.
All of that's right.